This evening, so it's the three of us. We, the council did meet in closed session just before start of this meeting and so I'll defer to the city attorney to report out.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to discuss with legal counsel three items. One concerning existing litigation, City of West Sacramento versus Department of Finance. No action was taken on that. And one item to discuss substantial exposure to litigation. And one under initiation of litigation, no action was taken on either of those items.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll ask that, let's see, Chris Elliott, I know Chris is here somewhere, okay, he'll lead us in the pledge and I know however you want to set up your troupe to lead us in the pledge would be great. And I know you're going to come up in a little bit, so under item 1A. Next item on our agenda is where the public can make presentations on matters that are not on the agenda this evening, but certainly within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. I have several slips to speak and I'll take them in the order that I received them. First is Johnny Shepherd. Come on up, good evening.
I'm Johnny Shepherd, Senior Pastor of the Department.
If you pull that microphone down, it's a little closer, and there's a button at the base of the microphone that'll help you. Great, thank you.
I'm Johnny Shepherd, Senior Pastor of the Department. Our mission there is to encourage, educate, empower, and help the public by teaching the canon of justice and justice. According to a census that was taken in, there's a community of suspected heart disease and stroke, and there's a segment of area possible mortality, and are meant to be killed in that area. Studies finally suggested that more healthcare information is required to be completed. We are seeking to help meet the need of this area, in this area, create an innovative community of health that will help these poor and undervoted area of people in that area. As the Brian and Superbowl 95605, we wish to make you aware of the process that you are currently applying for NIH, National Institute, to help grant, to help us further in the process of helping those who are in this area. The funding opportunity, we are planning to implement a limited health improvement to the intervention that came directly at the emergency time to contribute to eliminating health disparities at the families, neighborhood. I must say this in half, or even look like that difference over the other side of the issue. For some reason, I'm very nervous.
It's the kids behind you, they do it every time.
So I was a little intimidated earlier, so I'd like to ask you some questions. But what we're trying to do, trying to implement a program to help those who are disadvantaged, and also with suffering of heart disease and stroke, which is a period of
High-famous argument.
And towards being, we saw a lot of, and we're also getting to go to the system here in hopefully, in the city council, and the citizens who let themselves in here, and city council pastors, and city members, and giving them a call.
Great, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, Willie Mull, West Sacramento, for the record. And for those that hadn't read today's Sacramento Bee, it looks like Supervisor Mike McGowan will be leaving county service December 4 and become one of the top boys over there at DMV as appointed by Governor Jerry Brown. My congratulations to him. And I was at that public workshop regarding the proposed changes for buses 35 and 39 serving the South Side. And part that bothers me the most is we still don't have a shelter, a bench, at the Southport Town Center. And they're proposing to remove bus services from 15th Street where there's a fire station and also on Lake Washington Boulevard where there's also a fire station. So it seemed like that got started when it was decided to put in a Broadway 15th Street Bridge. And I guess they figured, well, hey, we're going to be getting all that other tractor, we better get these buses out of the way. Well, it makes it a little less convenient for those of us that take the bus to get around. So I hope we have second thoughts on that. But I still think Southport-South Sacramento Bridge would make a lot more sense than a Broadway 15th Street Bridge. And let's see, oh, and yes, I'm about 90-95 percent finished converting my old steep steps to wheelchair ramp, but still have to modify the driveway so that there's a smooth transition down at the bottom where the level ramp hits the slanted driveway. And, but that shouldn't take too much longer. Meanwhile, some notes on the letter from Senator Steinberg asking for suggestions as to how to, how we would modify existing laws to accommodate more universal design housing. And I just noticed last week, out there on Morse Avenue where we have the Kaiser Hospital at number 2025, about a mile to the south, past Arden Way, that next three quarters of a mile or so, on either side of Morse Avenue, about half the homes there that were built over 50 years ago, they already have wheelchair accessibility, smooth sailing from the driveway through the front door. They don't have any sidewalks, but that's sort of par for that area out there. But this was way before the Americans with Disabilities Act, so I'm emphasizing how much easier it is to proceed to change the code so that universal design housing soon becomes the rule rather than the exception. Of course, the multi-story housing, they would have their elevators and so forth. So I don't know how that ties in with this item number 10 on housing and grants. I was thinking maybe
Mr. Olman, I need you to wrap up with your three minutes. I've got your card for the next item as well, so.
Okay.
And thank you for bringing up the item of the bus shelters. I'll follow up with the Transportation District on that. I know the winter's coming and the shelters are important and it has been in the plans for beds, I'll follow up on that, thank you. Mr. John Freeman.
Hello, council members. My name's John Freeman and many of you know me working over at, or volunteering over at the West Sacramento Community Center where I provide public education on Cover California, which is the new healthcare exchange. And I'm here tonight to talk about a letter that Cover California mailed out on October 23rd to all the cities within California, asking the cities to get more involved with Cover California. And I won't read the whole letter because I don't have enough time, but what I will read is the one-third paragraph. On November 16th, Cover California hopes to launch "Covering Every City," a statewide partnership with dozens, if not hundreds, of cities to inform Californians about their health insurance options. Determine if they're eligible for financial assistance and help them enroll in affordable health insurance. We recognize that every community is different. While there is no size-that-fits-all approach, there is a universal need to help your community learn about this historic change to their healthcare options and affordability. I was in a hurry when I got this letter just today because I'd been requesting it for some time from Cover California. And I just emailed it to the addresses I had in my mail. And so some of you may have received it and some of you may have not, but I think that the clerk does have a copy of it if you'd like it. And I'd be more than happy to give you a copy of the whole letter. Also tonight, I've left some brochures about Cover California for the public on the counter. And you can't answer any questions, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I know this is an extremely important issue. I know you've been coming up and making sure that our community is well informed of this initiative, so thanks again. All right, Mr. Chris Elliott.
Councilmember Vegas, Councilmember Kristoff, Councilmember Johansson, just want to sincerely thank you from PAC 83 of Clarksburg for having us come to your meeting and having the opportunity to meet with you ahead of time. And on behalf of the other leaders, I am Assistant Cub Master Chris Elliott and the parents who are here with us, just want to, once again, thank you for the opportunity and talk about the deep ties between Clarksburg and West Sacramento as communities. And in fact, a number of those who are with us this evening are in fact West Sacramento residents. What we've been learning about in scouting most recently is about being a citizen and citizenship. And the scouts have been learning about our rights, our freedoms, and our duties as Americans and coming to see an elected body in action and to visit a government facility with something to help fulfill that. And you have more than helped fulfill and satisfy something that we see as more than a requirement, but really a responsibility as citizens to be able to participate in government and be with you here this evening. And just want to thank you again for that opportunity to allow us to be here.
Well, thank you very much for coming. And I know, as many of us do, you have a daytime job where, that pays the bills and the work that you do in the evening is extremely important and I know that the kids certainly appreciate it, as the parents do as well, I'm sure, the commitment, the time that goes into providing this wonderful opportunity for kids. But hopefully you learned something. I know that many of you had wonderful questions and you got a tour and opportunity. And if you missed anything, as I said, it's taped, so you can go back and watch it at your leisure and make fun of yourselves as we do. So thank you very much for coming. All right, great. Lana Palhemos.
Good morning, City Council, or good afternoon, City Council. I'm here to represent the West Sacramento Conservancy. And basically, I'm here to remind City Council of a letter that was sent to them on October the 31st to Mr., to Mayor Christopher Cabaldin and the City Council regarding request for a new arborist report on the sycamore trees of the Capitol Yard Project or the West Capitol Commons. Dear sirs, the West Sacramento Conservancy met on October the 26th, 2013 to review the arborist report prepared by Tree Associates of Winters. It appears that errors were made in that report. The tree species which the report maintains is that of the London Plains Sycamore, which is a hybrid. Dr. Glenn Holstein, PhD and botanist from Davis, indicated that those sycamore trees in question are clearly a California native Plantus resimosa and according to some sources an endangered species. Also in question is the claim that the majority of the sycamore trees are in poor-to-fair condition. Based on these findings, we are requesting a new impartial arborist report be completed. Respectfully submitted, Lana Palhemos. I also have documentation showing the exact nature of the error. Also with this packet is a petition that was sent to Doc., to Mr. Dan Nethercutt of Wolf Enterprises. And it was a petition signed over, there was signatures over 115 individuals who were voters and interested parties in the sycamore tree issue. And basically, they were asking to reconsider your redesign, Phase 2 of your development to include the use of those natural resources. By natural resources, we mean the sycamore trees. Also with this pack, and I have the petition of the signatures as well from West Sacramento. Also for the City Council's review, there's also a picture of the 13 trees which are under consideration for removal. And also the leaves of the London Plains, which are the alleged trees that are there. And lastly, the actual tree leaves of the trees that are actually there, not the ones that are proposed to be there. So I respectfully submit this to City Council for consideration, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Palhemos. If you'll give it to the city clerk. Kurt Stegen.
My name is Kurt Stegen, I'm a consulting arborist. And I did take a look at the arborist report that was submitted for the sycamore trees. And the ratings on them were somewhat incorrect. Usually when a poor rating is put on a tree, that means the tree's in decline. It's dying, it's on its way out. Those trees, they have longevity, they're going to be here a long time. Removing them, you have to start over and it's almost another generation to grow those trees back, another person's lifetime. I think that if you would reconsider and look at those trees and incorporate them into the project, I think they have value. I think that these young gentlemen here, that when they're my age, they could actually look at those trees and they'll still be there. It's kind of neat when you go out and see a tree that's three or four feet in diameter. They're large trees. There's no way that you can take a small, one-inch or two-inch tree and plant it and expect to have anything like that in a reasonable amount of time. So I would request that you take a walk down the sidewalk, take a look at the trees, and see if they have any value to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stegen. Marjorie Yetsey.
I am with the West Sacramento Conservancy and I want to second everything Lana said and Kurt said and add my usual spiel about trees that will never in a million lifetimes grow trees as strong and as healthy as the trees that have been growing for the last 50 to 100 years. Because we'll never have as good air quality, never have as good an environment, both above ground and below ground, for trees to grow. So we've got to be protective of our bigger, older trees. I'm not an expert on sycamores. I do believe, from looking at the trees and the leaves, that there was some kind of mistake or fraud or something in that arborist report that came from the developer. Because there's no way he could have been describing the trees that we actually see out there. I also, now that I'm lugging around oxygen 24/7, have another reason that I want to keep old trees alive, because they do help clean our air. And brand-new seedlings will never be able to do that. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yetsey. And as I mentioned, because this item is not on the agenda, we aren't able to really dialogue back and forth, but I'm sure the city manager's taking copious note, so thank you, thank you for your comments.
We could leave on agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments, thank you. Joan Lefring, I think it is, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly.
I'm here for the trees too. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to make sure everybody's hearing me. When I moved to West Sacramento 19 years ago, it didn't have much going for it, but it did have an excellent library. And then there was those row of sycamore trees planted by the state to enhance the roadway to the state Capitol. I noticed them right away. It has been interesting living here these 19 years, watching the city do their enhancement, of which this building is one of them. At the present time, the city is developing the shabby property where the enhancing sycamore trees grow. High-density housing is planned. 100 condominiums are to be built in the tree space. Something has got to go, and of course, it's to be the trees. How can all of us let this happen? How can we replace the beauty of these 15, 75-year-old trees, growing more beautiful and enhancing each year into the next century? They have become part of West Sacramento history. They are priceless, absolutely priceless.
Thank you. Right, that concludes that portion of our meeting. And so we, as I said, those are not agendized items yet, at least, and so we can't dialogue back and forth on the item. Next part of our agenda is agenda item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any communications, Mr. Johansson?
Yes, the Yidda County, West City of West Sacramento, 2x2 meeting was held on October 23rd and we discussed the homeless update. And discussion was really, the county, it looks like is willing and able to step forward with some of the implementation steps that we've had, or we're looking at having in the homeless report that we've adopted here, so, which is good news.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson, Mr. Kristoff.
Nothing. No reports, all right. The only report I have, I guess earlier this evening, the Port Commission met, we had a couple items to note. The port entered into a three-year lease agreement with the port itself and RNS Group International to bring back, hopefully, the logging industry and the idea of shipping logs out of the port of West Sacramento again. Hopefully that kicks off, but at least a three-year lease with some, generating some revenue is the starting point for that. And then we also authorized staff to submit a grant for some rail improvements on the property as well. That was earlier this evening. The next item is consent. We have items 2 through 8, and I have a comment to speak on item 4. Are there any other items that the council wants to pull off? None to my left. Mr. Kristoff, none to my right. So item 4 is consideration approval of the final homeless action plan. And the slip that I have is from Mr. Jeff Lyon.
My name is Jeff Lyon. If you were to draw a line east-west, right in the middle of Washington neighborhood, and then draw another line north-south, these two lines would intersect at my house. So there I am, smack dab in the very center of the historic Washington neighborhood. My neighbors and I experience all, all of the homeless problems you could ever imagine, day and night, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days each year. I could stand here and describe the multitude of negative problems caused by the continuous presence of the homeless in our neighborhood, our parks, and our retail stores, but it would take much more time allotted to me in this forum. Please note, there is not one single positive impact of having a homeless present in our Washington neighborhood. My neighbors and I reviewed the proposed West Sacramento Homeless Action Plan, and we feel it is a good start. We support two statements in the plan. Quote, "The city's primary responsibility is to protect public safety." The city is not a provider of social services. And we really like the goal of eliminating homeless services in the Washington neighborhood. However, we wish to emphasize the following three elements of our cause with respect to the homeless problem: compassion, enforcement, and replacement. The first element is compassion. We want to send a message far and wide, loud and clear, that the City of West Sacramento has compassion for the homeless persons that want to be helped. We propose two programs in our compassion element. The first program is to continue to contribute taxpayer money to fund various homeless services throughout the region, all of which are located outside of West Sacramento. Our level of contribution should be on the level commensurate with other municipalities in the region. We will not support or fund any homeless services within West Sacramento so as not to duplicate the many already established homeless services throughout our region. The second program provides transportation vouchers to ensure that any homeless person in West Sacramento can access the services they seek within our region, as West Sacramento does not provide any homeless services. Our police officers will carry these transportation vouchers with them for immediate use by any homeless person seeking services outside of West Sacramento. The second element is strict and continuous enforcement. This includes no camping anywhere on public property, no drinking alcohol in public, no possession of stolen shopping carts, no possession of stolen refuge containers, no dogs off-leash, no dogs without a dog license, no loitering in parks or shopping centers, no panhandling, no rummaging in dumpsters, the whole lot. We support an aggressive foliage removal program along the river to eliminate camping or hiding places.
Mr. Lyon, I'm going to need you to wrap up for the three minutes.
Okay, thank you. The third element is replacement. We aim to replace the members of the City Council with elected representatives that clearly support our cause. And this replacement action starts with our first candidate for City Council, myself, in November 2014. If you want to join our cause
So I'm going to need you to wrap, I'm going to need you to wrap it up right now.
Sure. Our email address is cleanupwestsac@att.net. And my phone number is 916-375-4060. Thank you.
Great, thank you for coming, thank you for your comments and taking the time to read the plan. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort has gone into this action plan. I think we concur that it's a good plan and so, so thank you for coming. That, let's see, so we've got items 2 through 8, that was the only card that I had to speak on any of those items. So unless there are any comments or questions, I'm looking for a motion to move forward with the consent agenda.
Mr. Acting Mayor, on item 7, staff provided an update in regard to the
That's right.
That item.
That's right, we do have, we have a, should have a memo on our, in front of our computers here with item 7.
It's a small change to the contract itself.
Pretty minor, okay. All right, looking for a motion to move the agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda along with the amendment to agenda item 7.
All right, we have a motion.
Okay.
And a second by Mr. Kristoff, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously with two absent. That takes us to the time-set agenda, item 9, which is a public hearing. And that public hearing is consideration of Resolution 13-59 amending the book of fees for the Fire Department and Code Enforcement Division regulatory activities, products, and services. Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you, council. Tonight, this is a public hearing, we are looking for adoption of the proposed fee changes. At the workshop, you gave direction for some changes to code enforcement. The hourly rate has been modified based on your direction from $65 per hour to $80 per hour to cover the costs of code enforcement activities. And I will turn it over to Brian Johnson to discuss some of the changes on the fire fees since the workshop.
Good evening.
Evening, council members. Following up from our workshop on the 16th, I did make mention that we needed to finish conducting our internal impact study to secure the, to assure the extended implementation we were considering would not grossly affect our revenue negatively. A result of the study, now that it has been A result of the study, now that it has been completed, two discoveries have been made. The first was that we found an issue with our original data set that was used for the conceptual fee restructure. We have since made the appropriate corrections, which have resulted in additional increases for hazardous materials fees only. The updated book of fees details this increase. We have shared this information with the Chamber of Commerce to keep them abreast of our potential, or the, potential business impact. The second discovery was that the four-year fee implementation period will cause a negative impact. As initially presented, this impact would be about a seventy-five-thousand-dollar impact over the four years, which is worst case. It's more likely that impact will be closer to thirty thousand, as we do not expect to fill vacant positions until possibly the beginning of the next fiscal year. This impact will be absorbed over the next three years from the Hazardous Materials Program Reserve Fund, and will begin recuperation starting the fourth year of implementation. Thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
No. Great, thank you very much for the updated presentation. So are there any council questions, comments? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do not have any slips, I don't think, right? City clerk, I don't think there were any for this item. Given that there are none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and turn it back to the council for further dialogue, any dialogue or a motion.
Let's start changing.
I would move that the, to adopt Resolution thirteen fifty-nine amending book of fees for charges related to the Community Development Code, Enforcement Division, and Fire Department Services.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously, again with two absent. Thank you very much. That takes us to item ten, which is a public hearing to consider Resolution thirteen dash nine-four authorizing an amendment to the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program Income Reuse Plan. Ms. Callis, good evening.
We're here this evening to request that the city council conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on an amendment to the Program Income Reuse Plan that governs the city's use of revenues received from CDBG-funded projects. A community development block grant is funding, HUD funding, that the city receives, pardon me, through the state of California. The state has revised its required text in this document, and we've been asked to revise the document to comply with the current state template. There are no substantial changes. The current reuse plan allows for all funds being received at this time to go into the single-family housing rehab loan fund, and that will continue. Basically, the only changes are those required by HCD. One reduces our general admin fees slightly from eighteen percent to seventeen percent, and the other significant change is that this document has a five-year term, whereas previous documents were basically forever until the city chose to make changes. That's all, concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions? Nope. All right, so it does require a public hearing, so I will once again open up the meeting for that public hearing. I have no slips to speak, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you very much for the presentation, bring it back to the council for actions.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Did Mr. Lowell have a request to speak on this item?
Oh, you know what? He did. I'm sorry. Yes, he had marked both of these. Yes, Mr. Lowell, come on up. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record, and as I was about to interject earlier, if this, if the present rules do not already allow it, I think we should consider allowing people who may need modifications to their homes to make them safer to get up and down the stairs, and if they need a ramp, if they cannot finance it themselves, maybe we should consider some kind of a loan program which could be repaid when their home is sold, and it sounds, it sounds like it would fit in with this, this program that does exist, so if it, if it doesn't already cover what I described, I think maybe we should consider modifying it so that other people in the future can have those safety changes made quicker and less expensively. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lowell. So now I will officially close the already closed public hearing, but I opened it back up for Mr. Lowell, and so now back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I would move to adopt Resolution thirteen ninety-four approving an amendment to the CDBG Program Income Reuse Plan as presented by staff.
A motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously to absent. Thank you very much. Ms. Callis on the presentation. Item eleven is a presentation and discussion of draft ordinance thirteen dash seven amending chapters fifteen-point-one-two and repealing and reenacting chapters fifteen-point-one-four of the city of West Sacramento municipal code to adopt by reference the twenty-thirteen California Building Standards Code with local amendments. Is that Mr. Goodwin? Good evening.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Viegas and council. This workshop is to review proposed ordinance thirteen dash oh-seven. The proposed ordinance adopts the twenty-thirteen California Building Codes in conjunction with the state's triennial update. Proposed ordinance thirteen dash oh-seven will repeal the existing two thousand and ten California Building Codes. The new code is based on the two thousand and twelve international building codes and the two thousand and ten ADA. The proposed ordinance recommends minor administrative additions to be included in the West, West Sacramento Municipal Code and in chapters, in chapter fifteen-point-one-two building and some local fire code updates for chapter fifteen-point-one-four, fire. It is the policy of the city of West Sacramento to adopt new codes and standards as enforced by the California State Building Standards Commission, Department of the State Architect, and the California Housing and Community Development Department. Local jurisdictions typically adopt the code with local amendments. The parameters for the local amendments and conditions are: amendments must be more restrictive than the code sections; amendments must be supported by findings based on climatic, topographical, and geological conditions within one hundred and eighty days of the publication of the California Building Codes. This one hundred and eighty-day period ends on January first, two thousand and fourteen. Amendments must be approved by city council, and amendments must be submitted to the Building Standards Commission before January first, two thousand and fourteen. These codes provide minimum standards to safeguard life, health, property, and public welfare by regulating and controlling the design, construction, and quality of materials, use, and occupancy, location, and maintenance of all buildings and structures within the jurisdiction of the city of West Sacramento. The adoption of current codes establishes the procedure for enforcement of building construction and occupancy, providing the highest level of life safety and property protection through quality service. I'd like to thank city attorneys Jeff Mitchell, Anthony Bento, Acting Fire Marshal Brian Johnson to my left, Planning Manager David Tilly, Senior Planner Sandra White, and Clerk Chris Rankin, City Clerk Chris Rankin for their help developing and reviewing the ordinance. Acting Fire Marshal Brian Johnson will now give a brief update on the proposed municipal code, chapter fifteen-point-one-four revisions.
Good evening again. Excuse me. In regards to the fire code, two noticeable changes have been made: inclusion of manufactured homes and residential sprinkler requirements, and requirements, excuse me, in the residential sprinkler requirements and a requirement for residential sprinkler certification for home resale. In regards to sprinklers in manufactured homes, currently, there is no sprinkler requirement for single-family manufactured homes. However, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, acknowledges and approves the local jurisdictions requiring such sprinklers. We do not believe the intent for this current discrepancy was to specifically exclude automatic sprinkler systems in manufactured homes. The lack of specific inclusion of automatic sprinkler systems in this situation is merely an oversight in code development, which is currently being addressed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the NFPA. The situation is similar to one that took place in the nineteen-eighties when smoke detectors were first required in residences. It took some time after, but HUD eventually joined suit, and smoke detectors are also required in manufactured homes. In anticipation of HUD eventually requiring sprinklers in manufactured homes and continue to meet our responsibility to the public and our emergency responders to provide safeguards for health and safety from the hazards of fire, we like to include manufactured homes in our residential sprinkler requirement. We have also included the requirement for sprinkler certification for home resale as a gap currently exists, and assuring these systems are operable after installation. As California has only required residential sprinkler systems since this current code cycle, nothing has been initiated to assure operation. At a minimum with this requirement, we can assure that any sprinkler system inherited by a future homeowner will be functioning in a safe and appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any comments or questions regarding the presentation? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, one for Brian and one for Randy. So Brian, the, we're not changing, on the sprinklers, we're not changing the square footage that was required. It's four thousand square feet for...
That's for any building in general. As it currently stands, any residential building that is constructed is required to have sprinklers, with exception to manufactured homes, by definition in the building code. So what we're doing is including that into the code so that we can allow sprinklers to be installed on manufactured homes, just as conventional homes.
Right, but a two-thousand-square-foot new home doesn't require sprinklers, does it?
No, any home. As of the, the last code cycle, residential code, yeah, any home, residence built is required to have sprinklers. The old code used to be four thousand.
Right, right, okay, all right. And then Randy, so have you heard any comments about the adoption here? It looks like these are consistent with the state law. Anything that's more restrictive that you've received, any comments on by the building industry?
It still has to be approved.
I have not. The amendments in the building code are administrative. It's, it's, there isn't anything included that's really above and beyond what the twenty-thirteen stock code is.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Lot of information, good updates. Looking for a motion to move it forward. You're on a streak. Oh, it's only in workshop, but we are being asked to... So do you need a motion on this, or is it just a, there's some recommended action, but it doesn't say that we...
This is a workshop.
This is a workshop.
So, we're really, no action required.
Got it. Very good. All right, makes it easy for us. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven, item twelve is presentation and discussion of draft ordinance thirteen dash ten adding chapters fifteen-point-one-one, electric fences to Title Fifteen of the city of West Sacramento municipal code. Thanks to two of you again.
This is workshop as well. Good evening, Acting Mayor Viegas and council. This workshop is to review proposed ordinance thirteen dash ten. Proposed ordinance thirteen dash ten will add chapter fifteen-eleven, electric fences to the city of West Sacramento municipal code, and is being considered to strengthen and support Title Fifteen of the municipal code, Buildings and Construction. The proposed ordinance contains the following provisions. The installation of an electric fence requires an approved permit with the building official and fire code official. Applications must include the following: a site plan indicating the location of the electrified fence and perimeter fence, schematics and load calculations indicating and/or displaying the location of the power source, materials used for the fence construction, location of the regulating and monitoring equipment, location of the emergency access, Knox box and cutoff switches. A separate permit shall be obtained for the construction of the perimeter fence and shall be constructed prior to the electrified fence installation. The established fee for a permit to install an electrified fence shall be paid by the applicant at the time of filing an application and upon renewal of the permit. Electrified fences or barriers will require an operational permit with the fire department. On an annual basis, the applicant will submit a notarized statement attached to the renewal permit from an authorized representative of the fence or barrier equipment manufacturer confirming the installation is currently operating in conformity with its safety requirements. I will now turn the presentation over to the Acting Fire Marshal, Brian Johnson.
Thanks, Randy. I think you covered it well. I didn't have anything to add unless there were any questions.
No. Any questions? Seen no questions from here, so we are looking for... Again, this is a workshop, so there's no action required.
Action needed, makes it easy. All right, well, great, thank you very much. Lot of good work.
Thank you.
All right. Item thirteen is a public workshop, workshop on proposed zoning ordinance changes and additions pertaining to emergency shelters. Mr. Tilly, good evening.
Yes, good evening to you. As you, as you stated, we're here tonight in a workshop format to discuss some zoning changes and new sections to our zoning ordinance as it pertains to emergency shelters. This is a follow-up to our recently adopted housing element and also to the homeless action plan that the council took final action on tonight and has been before you at several previous meetings. Our intent is to change some of the zones where our zoning matrix currently permits emergency shelters, and also to add development and operating standards as for those shelters, which we currently have no, no requirements for in our municipal code. Senate Bill Two, which was passed in two thousand and seven and went into effect in two thousand and eight, which is codified in our, in the California Government Code, sets the parameters by which local jurisdictions can regulate emergency shelters. Although the city is not obligated to have a shelter constructed, we must set at least one zone where shelters are permitted by right, and we may also may include objective development and operating standards, you know, for, for a shelter should one ever be built. The draft ordinance, which is before you tonight and is attached to your staff report, changes the zones where shelters would be allowed. Principally, they would be no longer allowed in residential zones and would be moved into our, most primarily our industrial zones, either on a conditional or permitted basis, and, which is consistent with many of the other communities' ordinances that we've reviewed during the preparation of this ordinance. The draft ordinance also includes objective criteria for shelter development and management, which would address matters such as hours of operation, provision for onsite security, day-to-day management, housekeeping of the site, and also various such things as prohibition on, you know, drug and alcohol use at the facility. As part of our ongoing review of this effort, we have determined that there probably could be some additional language included in the draft ordinance, and we've summarized what that, you know, could be in the memo that was provided to you this evening. We would recommend that we would include a more formal definition for emergency shelter, and also for day-use facilities, which would be those facilities that would provide services to homeless persons but would not include any type of overnight stay. So tonight, we would like to take public comment and seek your direction tonight. This matter is scheduled for a public hearing before the Planning Commission at their, their next meeting tomorrow, and then we, at this time, are scheduled to return before the council in a public hearing at your next meeting on the twentieth. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. David, are there any, Mr. Johansson?
So David, this would, if this went into effect, would it apply to existing shelters?
Well, presently, we do not have any emergency shelters, you know, in town. So to the extent that one would, would be constructed after this ordinance was in effect, then it would most definitely be applicable to that facility, both the location and the management criteria.
All right. Mr. Kristof.
Dave, if there were going to be emergency shelters, who's responsible for the operation and maintenance?
It could be in a couple of different formats. Many of them are operated by, you know, nonprofit organizations, and so we wouldn't presume this would be a city-operated facility, for example, would, if one were ever to come to town. So it likely would be a private...
for example, would, if one were ever to come to town. So it likely would be a private organization. And with that in mind, that's why we feel it's very important to have the management criteria in our ordinance and to, to show, because we would hope that any facility that we're constructing in town would be one that would be successful and would be minimally impactful on surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know this has been an issue that we've been grappling with for quite some time, and I know that we didn't have anything in place, but certainly given some consideration to the location where we want them, should we go down that path, and the standards by which we'd want them to be operated, is something that we, we absolutely need to, need to be thinking about. And so I think this, this gets us going in that direction. It's the right, it's the right policy direction, so it makes good sense. So thanks for the good work, David.
You know, it, it goes a little further than that in some respects, because, I mean, I think it's been the council's wishes and desires and wants that the county really be involved in some kind of a shelter, whether it be the mental health facilities, the drug facilities, or whatever they may be. And the county has indicated there's a willingness to do that. Now, I don't know where the money comes from, but at the same time, you know, there, there certainly is the lip service as far as, as providing and assisting. And I just really want to make sure that, you know, these emergency shelters, if they're going to be here, they certainly need to have that component. If they can't get that component, we need to turn it down until we can have that component, because it's so important to the, I mean, you heard the gentleman here earlier. I mean, he's not a happy camper. And, you know, these are in, in residential neighborhood and this and that. Now, we're, we're trying to make some changes to all that, and that's what this does. But at the same time, we just really do need to make sure that we cross all the i's and dot all the t's before we get too far into the building of a shelter, doing whatever it is, or even the emergency shelters. We need to make sure we work with the state so that if somebody does apply for a grant, the information that they use to apply for that grant is legitimate, it's truthful. And so I think that, you know, those are going to be important components of all this as we move forward.
All right. So it's a public workshop. I don't have any slips to speak, right? City clerk, I don't have any slips on this. Item thirteen, not before me, so. Nothing to add to that, Mr. City Manager? No? Okay, all right, great. Thank you, David. So I am required then to inform the audience that the public hearing for the first reading of the ordinance, I didn't yet make, does that need to be placed in a motion, or can I just make that note?
You can just read the...
I can just read it? Okay. So I just need to make sure that everybody knows that the public hearing and the first reading of ordinance thirteen dash nine amending is title seventeen regarding the various amendments to the West Sacramento municipal code is scheduled for November twentieth of 2013, which is later this month. So is that fulfill the obligation under this item? That's it? All right, great. Thank you. All right, that concludes our regular agenda, which takes us to council calendar.
Yes, Mr. Acting Mayor, I wanted to point out a couple of things that aren't showing on the calendar. This Friday on November eighth, we're going to be recognizing city employees that are, that are veterans here in the, in the Galleria. So far, we have, we've identified thirty-six city employees that have served in the, in the armed forces at some point in their career. So we're going to have a short ceremony honoring them and taking, taking a picture of them. We're very, quite proud of them. On the fourteenth, at eleven o'clock here at City Hall, there's going to be a media event talking about our commitment to environmental issues by showcasing our electric vehicle charging station outside of the, of the... And then on the twentieth, not on the calendar, is the fact that we're starting the meeting at six o'clock with our employee service awards. So that'll take place then. And finally, as some, as Mr. Lowell mentioned earlier, Supervisor McGowan is leaving the Board of Supervisors, and we've been informed that his last meeting will be on Tuesday, December third, and the board plans to do some recognition of him at that point, and others are invited to attend that. So they wanted us to get that information out to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. City manager report?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, council members. Care I went over the calendar. One other item on December fifth and six, the streetcar staff is working with Congresswoman Matt Sui on a demonstration streetcar service on the Green Line in Sacramento, and as, once that gets confirmed, we'll get the details to you.
Perfect. Great. Thank you very much. City attorney report? No reports. Staff director from the council members saying none. There are no items submitted for future consideration, so looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, all those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.